Good evening, everyone. I would like to call December 10, 2018, meeting of the University City Council to order. Mr. Heavis, please call the hall.
Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Here.
Councilmember Cusick.
Here.
Councilmember Smitherson.
Here.
Mayor Grohl.
Here. Thank you very much. Before you, you have the agenda, or any changes to the agenda. Hearing now, motion for the agenda to be approved, as provided. Mr. McMahon, seconded by Ms. Carr, is there any discussion? Hearing now, motion in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before you, you have a, in front of the members of the office, we have the Recognition Observance of Human Rights Day, as requested by the city manager, and I'll take a moment, please, and read this proclamation. I hope that as you enter the building, or as you leave the building tonight, that you will have a chance to look at the lights surrounding the University City. I appreciate the fact, as I know the council, those of you who do as well, that the city manager asked that the City Hall of the University City be bathed with the rainbow lights in honor of this Human Rights Day, so thank you very much for doing that. Whereas, Human Rights Day is observed every year on December the 10th. It commemorates the day in which, in 1948, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And whereas, for 2018, the United Nations called on everyone to stand up for someone's rights on Human Rights Day. And whereas, the United Nations states that many among us are fearful about the direction of our country and our world, disrespect for basic human rights continues to be widespread in all parts of the globe. Extremist movements subdue people to horrific violence. Messages of intolerance and hatred prey on our fears. Humane values are under attack. Whereas, it starts with simple acts from each of us. We ask our teachers, our administrators, and staff, our towns, boards, and committees, our business community, and our residents, to set the example, to step forward and defend the rights of a refugee or migrant, a person with disabilities, an LGBT person, a woman, a child, indigenous people, a minority group, or anyone else at risk of discrimination or violence. To speak out for tolerance and against prejudice, to inform yourself and others about why human rights matter, to keep yourself in check, challenge your own views and prejudices, and consider the human rights record of companies before doing their shopping. And whereas, the Declaration of Human Rights' fundamental proposition is that each one of us, everywhere, and at all times, is entitled to the full range of human rights matters everyone is responsible to uphold. They bind us together as a global community. Each one of us can make a difference. Now therefore, the City Council of University City is standing for a jury to give life to the plan December 10, 2018, as Human Rights Day in University City. And the council encourages all University City citizens to be mindful of human rights and principles, and urges all municipal, state, federal, and international bodies to incorporate these principles into their practices, laws, and bodies. Whereof, we have a parent who sent our hands across the field, the City University City, to fix this 10th day of December in the year 2018. Thank you. You have before you the minutes of the November 12 study session, the motion to be approved. Motion invited by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clay, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. You have before you the November 13 study session, with the topic of motion to University, the motion to be approved. Motion by Mr. Hales, seconded by Ms. Carr, is there any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. November 26, 26, the study session on the listed platform, a motion to be approved. Ms. Carr, is there a second? Mr. Smitherson, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. November 26 regular session, there's a motion to be approved. Mr. Smitherson, second, Ms. Carr, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We now have a number of appointments, I'll leave Ms. Carr ahead of the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Lisa Hummel to the Park Commission, replacing Kathleen Stanley, determined to fire her.
There's a motion, is there a second? Mr. Cusick, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Carr.
I would like to nominate Julie Brill-Texera for the Urban Forestry Commission, replacing Tom Sante.
Is there a second? Mr. McMahon, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Carr.
I would like to nominate for reappointment Judith Gator and Margaret Holly to the Plan Commission.
Is there a second? Mr. Hales, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're now moving forward to citizen participation. Citizen participation, second, we ask that you are coming forward to speak, that you give your name and address. You are limited to five minutes. If in fact, during this 15-minute session, we do not get to you, then we will have time at the end of our meeting for you to speak. The first person to decide to speak is Mrs. Ed Leibson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ed Leibson. I live at 7574 Cornell Avenue. I'm here to speak to you about a parking problem in University City. First, I encourage the City Council to rescind parking ordinance 6989. More and more Washington students park on our streets as a result of this ordinance, which was enacted in 2015, which decreased the number of parking spaces required in a variety of situations, and allowed Washington to construct student housing with fewer parking spaces than was what required after the older ordinance. This change has created some serious parking problems. And while we can't honing the bell for those that have that housing parking ratio that was built based on 6989, we can prevent exacerbation of the problem with regard to Washington's proposed housing construction. Second, non-enforcement of parking ordinances has also harmed us and increased these parking problems. Although some University City streets are limited to residents, we apartments, Washington students have been illegally parking in these areas with impunity. Washington passively encourages this law-breaking, wide-limiting, the number of parking spaces available to its, in its University City housing, and charging extra for those parking spaces within their residential buildings. They seem to believe that we won't do anything about it, and know that we in fact helped create the problem with the enactment of ordinance 6989. Please enforce our parking restrictions. We're only harming ourselves through non-enforcement. And in addition, please make these permanent areas a towaway zone for non-permanent owners. So, to repeat again, please rescind ordinance 6989 and enforce our ordinances. Our neighbors are suffering from this abuse by Washington, their students, and the lack of the proper competitions. Thank you.
Next request, our next request to speak comes from Erin Ginsburg.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Erin Ginsburg. I live at 430 West Point Court. And just piggybacking on what Ed just said, I'm a Washington alumni, a longtime U-City resident, and I want to thank you for addressing the inequity in our longstanding relationship. And I'm here to encourage you to negotiate with Washington from a position of strength. Parking has been and will continue to be an issue for both us and Washington University. So, like Ed said, please consider rescinding parking ordinance 6989. I believe that restoring from 2015 parking standards will give U-City more leverage in negotiations. Please also consider stricter code enforcement of Washington University-owned properties. And again, I thank you for your advocacy on behalf of U-City residents. And as usual, I'm here to keep you up to date on University City's kitties and our track-neuter, vaccinating return advocates. Since I last addressed City Council, U-City's TNR volunteers partnered with St. Louis Peral Cat Outreach to build 243 winter shelters for St. Louis City and County Community Cats. These shelters were made at no cost to University City, and will provide safe places for our community cats to seek warmth from the cold. These shelters will decrease nuisance behaviors, like kitties huddling near car engines, and in turn, decrease calls to animal control. In the past week, U-City TNR volunteers also helped three community cats get neutered, vaccinated, and volunteers successfully placed three kitties, kittens, into a no-kill rescue, again, at no cost to U-City, without neutering the one female cat in her offspring, having the potential to produce 20,000 cats in just four years. So, I want to thank you for considering a TNR ordinance for U-City. And I did bring some kitty volunteers with me tonight, and we even have a shelter, so you can see, see that after the meetings. I hope you will allow me to introduce you to my fellow kitty friends after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is from Tom Sullivan.
Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a few things to mention. First, I'd like to applaud City Manager Greg Rose for holding the firm of the Loop Trolley, making it get everything in order before being allowed to operate in the University City. This may be the first time anyone in this city has stood up to the Trolley. The Trolley continues to be a fiasco, the new barriers for the oil and electric pole make the area from a library look even worse. While the city has been spending so much time and effort on proposed Olive and 170 development, it seems the east end of the city has been forgotten. There are vacant storefronts, vacant buildings, and vacant land where nothing seems to be happening. The amount of revenue lost to the city has to be considerable. In the Loop, the Old Cicero's Base has been vacant for a year and a half. It looks bad, but one of the top spots in the Loop has been vacant for so long. Just east of the Old Cicero's, Publica, will be closing soon. Just east of that is the vacant space where Randolph Beach used to be. A little further east is the vacant space where Sol Clues used to be before closing a few months ago. A boutique around the corner in the same building previously closed. Two upper floors of the building are vacant as St. Andrew's Senior Services moved out. On the south side of Delmore, just east of Regent's Bank, there are two vacant storefronts. One previous tenant has threads moved over the plaza. A little further east, the Old Red Company Space is still vacant. The guys just took over the space, but they closed over a year ago. Further east of 6602 Delmore, there are four vacant retail spots in the two-story building. Down the street, Continuity Building, HSB Tabato, closed earlier this year after 46 years of business, and the statement of space is still vacant. A little east of there, there are two vacant storefronts in one building at 6316 Delmore. Just east of Westgate, Phoenix Rise, closed after 26 years of summer, and the space is vacant. The Riverfront Times called it "The coolest shop in the Loop." Just east of that space, yet another vacant retail space. Going west of the Loop, on the corner of Delmore and Midland, there are two vacant storefronts. They have been vacant for some time. Going to Olive, North and South, the northeast corner is still vacant, where a beer garden had been planted. The city spent nearly $1 million assembling the land and sold it for $100,000. Now the developer wants to sell back the city for nearly $1 million, and the contract with the city may allow him to do so. If the city can't handle the development on the corner of Lot, how can it handle the development covering 50 acres? Further east on Olive, there are three vacant storefronts in the Shino's Scrip Center. Across the street is another vacant building that has about three vacant retail spaces. Going east to Ferguson and Olive, there's the old gas station on the corner that has been vacant for some time. There's a vacant spot next to it. Black East is another vacant. On Olive, between Kingsland and Westgate, on the south side of the street, there are acres of vacant undeveloped land. There was supposed to be a development in Kingsland, Vernon, called Kingsville Walk, but it never came about, and the corner is still vacant. You are so anxious to tear down a large part of the western part of the city and kick out many thriving businesses, while feeling to do anything about all the vacant storefronts, buildings, and land in the eastern part of the city. It doesn't make any sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our next request to speak is Mrs. Patricia Queen.
Hello, good evening. My name is Patricia Queen. I live at 1132 George Street. I'm coming, because it's the last meeting of the year, and I have a feeling I should, I feel like I need to bring some things to attention. One, I'm wondering where we are with the staffing for the Community Development Director, Economic Development Director, and Communications Director. Because I think once those people are on staff, a lot of questions from residents will be answered. And we can agree that as the previous speakers mainly was talking about economic development, and once that staff position is in place, then I think that there will be some movement on that. Although what he's talking about, the city doesn't have any control over private development, uh, business folks. The one thing I want to bring to bear is, over and over again, as we've been giving the term gentrification, I just want to let you know, I've been studying that term for several months now while I've been in school, and really, what I found out was that the term itself actually is the meaning of gentrification, gentry. It's a, the person who coined it is from Britain. And she was talking about gentry coming into working-class neighborhoods. And so, University City is not necessarily gentry, and the third ward is more the working class. It's both middle income and working class, so we have to look at that. The definition itself is, has many aspects to it, both. You could look at it from the economical side and from the sociological side. So, the one thing that is negative about it is there's displacement. And I do know that when I was looking at the development, the displacement can, is happening, but there's things that are being put into place to try to minimize the displacement for the people who have to leave if that development goes forth. Another thing is that we're not in a hot housing market, so we don't have to worry about people rushing in, and there'll be a lot of gentrification in the third ward. I don't believe that will happen in the way that it's presented. And also, that housing markets are usually on the cities on the east coast and west coast, in Chicago. Yes, there's some gentrification in St. Louis City, like the Central West End, but that is not the third ward. So, I don't think that we need to keep that into consideration. And I want to end by saying, we should start looking at solutions that can be replicated, like what's going on in Detroit. Detroit is doing something where they're doing greenlighting. They're working with banks. They're working with organizations that are similar to what we have here in St. Louis, a nonprofit organization called Justin Peterson. So, that's what we should be looking at, but these are going to be medium-to-long-term solutions and things we have to work on. And so, my closing note for 2018 is that that's what we should be looking at, how we can make more renters into homeowners. Thank you.
I thank our honorableness speaker, Ms. Carter.
Good evening. My name is Donna McGee, and I reside at 7584 Melrose, Third Ward, proud to be. Just wanted to thank you all for being attentive throughout the year since I moved into my home. As far as my concerns regarding the tree, the infamous tree in front of my home, I just want to thank everybody for being attentive. I'm grateful that the pony process has started. The guys have come out, and I think one day when I arrived home, I noticed the yard was really clean, and they started the process. I hesitated to make a call this morning, and I spoke with Mr. Ewall, who's always been gracious, respectful, and very receptive to my conversations. And I mentioned one limb that's over the left side of my roof, and he was just very cordial, and I told him that I really wanted him to thank the guys, and he didn't want to feel bad in any way, or what they've done. And he was very receptive to my request to cut that limb down. So again, I'm grateful my coming experience not have been in vain. I said I would constantly be back because I'm concerned about that tree. I'm still concerned about that tree. With my past experience of a similar tree falling from across the street at the corner of a driveway, across the street onto my car, which was parked inside my mom's driveway, and causing me to pay a copay or whatever is the concern, cost a roof, which can be a $1,000 deductible, and a slap-on that is from the insurance company, as well as the reliable issues that always are concerned now that I'm a homeowner and I love third ward. So again, I want to thank everybody for being attentive. This is the last meeting of the year. My city manager, my third ward councilman, and each and every councilperson here, I thank you for being attentive throughout the year. And also, good things as far as U-City, the high school students had stand night. I wasn't able to be there, but we still have some good things going on in U-City's school systems. I'm a product of U-City, a college graduate of a few universities, so there are some students that are matriculating, going to the military. So continue to keep our students up in prayers and support them. Also, the library staff, I wanted to mention, they're 100%. They're awesome. And so, again, the forestry guys, I'm gonna try to get their names from Mr. Ewall so that I can send them a thank you note. I'm very honored to be in the third ward and be a U-City citizen, U-City homeowner, and I just want to thank you. This is the last meeting for us throughout the year, through this year, and I just want to thank you for your time. Have a great one.
Thank you very much. That concludes this force of citizen participation for the evening. We'll now move forward to the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for the liquor license for newly leaving kitchen, a P423 Olive, at 6:52 PM. Ms. Reese, do we have any requests to speak? Thank you, there are no requests to speak, and I will close the public hearing at 6:52 PM. Thank you very much. We're now moving forward to the consent agenda. A motion to approve items 1 through 7 of the consent agenda. Motion made by Mr. Hales, who says a second. Seconded by Ms. Carr, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, this is a gin I'd ask for council to approve a conditional use permit. For the location, I would need to direct the staff to work on 6403 Clemens. It allows the Coalition for Law of St. Louis to office out of All Saints Church, which is located at 6403 Clemens, in reference to the choice of scientific wisdom here.
Thank you very much. The city manager has requested the district's amendment. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cusick. Any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the next agenda I'd ask council to approve a wireless communication loophole. In the public right-of-way rear 7206 Pershant Avenue. Also per, per to its impact on the historic character here on Terrace National District. We believe that in the future, if the council approves the legislation act, that is being written in letter, this will be considered a minor approval that will be done and administered. The pole that is being installed, instead of a 33.4, 33.6 inches, they're proposing a 38.6 inches at the same location.
Your pleasure. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Cusick, is there a second? Mr. McMahon, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this is a similar request for a new pole. The location is 7491 Empire Avenue. They are proposing to remove a 33.4 inch pole and replace it with a 38.6 inch pole.
Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Cusick, is there a second? Mr. McMahon, any discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the last item under the city management board is requesting recommending approval of the legislative platform for 2029. The attached, the platform is crap. The attached, the platform is created to provide you with the ability to give direction to staff and provide your position to our federal and state delegation on current and potential legislative issues. Specifically, the platform provides your direction on revenue, finance, governance, quality services, infrastructure.
Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Mr. Clay, any discussion? Ms. Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rose, what if something comes up in the middle, in the middle of this year, and it's something that we would like to address? How would we handle that legislatively?
Honorable Mayor, your point is, this mayor, if council simply give direction to myself, and I would work with our, if it's a federal issue, with our federal delegation, if it's a city issue, with our state delegation, to effectively whatever change you see.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion for you? Any other discussion? Hearing none, those who favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll now move forward to new business. We have no resolutions. We have no unfinished business. We would like to introduce bill number 9374, Mr. Smutson. Ms. Reese, would you please give us the first reading?
Anointment of meeting chapters 100 and 505 of the municipal code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to zoning districts established pursuant to section 407.0, there are an acting a new there of a new official zoning map. Thereby, meaning said map so as to change the classification of property that is located within the city limits of University City in 1167, really poured from G. Second General Commercial District to SR Single Family Residential.
Thank you, Mr. Smutson. I introduce bill number 9375. Mr. Hales, may I have the first reading?
Anointment of meeting chapters 100 and 505 of the municipal code of the City of University City, Missouri, related to regulations for right-of-way management and enforcement regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Smutson. I introduce bill number 9376. Ms. Carr, may I have the first reading, Mr. Smutson?
Anointment of meeting chapter 400 of the University City Municipal Code to adopt regulations relating to communications, incentives, and support structures.
Thank you very much. That concludes the new business portion of our agenda. Now for the council reports, if this is a single report, they'd like to make convenient provisions upon visitation of locations. Mr. McMahon?
Just briefly, I think the related parts, commission they called open, he knew chair of that commission sent out an email to everybody with their parks and recreation priorities. And I just wanted to make sure that you all had that and worked on that a little bit, just so that we all understand what they went through, just to highlight what they did to get their priorities for the parks that we have coming up here. But they did a really detailed survey of residents, parks themselves, staff, all the projects that they were looking towards, maybe upcoming year or beyond. They not only did that, but they were able to report, they set out their criteria of how they rank all of the different projects. And so, if you go further in and you look at each of the projects, and spell out what those priorities were targeting, targeting each of those projects, and then they went in and after they compiled that task list, that's what committed that they set up, they each ranked them, and wrote them, represented. We look at this and we work with capital, and we're like, it's a lot of it. So I just wanted to point that out to the commission and to copy for, or Reese, you can add that in a minute if you would like, it's supposed to be available also as part of that. And I just thought, and wanted to commend the commission on some really good work setting up those capital projects and the improvements that they're looking at in our parks.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Mr. Hales?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize and thank Tom Sontag, who is cycling off the air before his re-commission. He served two terms, most recently as chair. And it was wonderful to get to know him and that commission of his last several months. So, thank you, Tom.
Anything else? Hearing none, we will move forward to other discussions of business and council rule provision. Ms. Carr, Mr. Hales, and Mr. Smutson and I, along with the city managers, city attorneys, Ms. Reese have worked on the rules, and we have them before you. Real quickly, I can move through a couple of the changes that would be, probably tell you the more substantive changes. Rule number 3A will allow now for video participation in votes in an executive closed session. And we could then move forward to rule 10, which is the agenda for the evening. There is now will be a provision that after citizen comments during the first party meeting, there will be a council comment section so that council members would like to either make comments at that time, they can make them, or not necessarily make a response to citizen comments, but gives the opportunity then for a council member to make a response, or a statement at that time, that is in rule number 10. In rule number, let's see, 24, which is probably one of the larger changes, I mean, if you may recall, in previous administrations, there was a retributive rule, but if you could not bring something up, it was been one year. If it was brought forward, that has been deleted, is in fact, if council approves tonight, that rule will be changed to where it could bring matters back up. That was something that was a concern to many members of the council. Nonpartisan portion was just simply a recommitment to the practice of all members of council being nonpartisan. And I believe the only other substantive change, we took out the 30-day appointment limitation for rotations, because that doesn't seem to be much of an issue for us. And finally, in the rule 40, we clarify the responsibilities and maybe the rights of state council members as being able to participate to the full extent possible voting in all commissions to which they advise. So that are all, those are the changes that were proposed by Mr. Hales, Ms. Carr, Mr. Smutson, or myself, with the help of the senior staff. We welcome any questions or discussions from our colleagues on these rules. Mr. McMahon?
The only question I get was related to participation in closed meetings by video conference. And that then goes to the other rules related to making closed meetings closed. What are, do we need to set forth any parameters for those of us that may need to utilize that to ensure that communications, the place you're doing, your video conferencing from, because some of those might include legal matters, if you've got legal opinions, and there's a chance of someone listening in or watching, I just, is there a process?
Well, I think clearly, and maybe John has a different response to this, but I believe that every member of council would expect their colleague to be in a secure environment, where the information's not going to be shared in any way, as it were.
I would expect that. I'm just wondering if we need to formalize any process related to that, so we can, we know that, or at least make sure.
I guess, I think what I would suggest is, I doubt this is going to occur very often, and I'd like to see if we finally need to do that. I mean, I do think candidly, for doing the executive session, I hope you're accustomed to the era. And I think you've noticed that by the background, hopefully. And I think the more challenging situation, we would know if someone else was necessarily agreeing with you. And I think that's one of those items, probably, we need to at least be ready to revisit and change if in fact you think that is, I think, oh, by the way, that what I would also suggest, and maybe wrong, I believe that council would have acted inappropriately if they had been in a location where in fact they had, they were hired by the authorities, and everything was kept confidential.
And not to have to, but that, I would agree that they were acting inappropriately, but the problem then, you know, once the cat's out of the bag, and we have legal opinions that might be out there everywhere, it's suddenly not confidential in communication anymore. So we can tell them you acted badly, but is it to the detriment of our residents and our city? That's.
Correct. Good thinking, absolutely. I'm not sure if the truth of yours or that, but, well, I think other bodies do allow electronic participation, and so I think there's likely some precedent out there for how these kinds of things are handled. So perhaps it's just researching how other bodies handle that. Okay. Ms. Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wanted to ask Mr. McMahon what he suggested. It always comes down to the integrity of the person, and we know what the rules are, but what would you suggest in terms of the confine against the security?
Well, I think you needed to at least spell out the process rule, so that members are at least understanding that they can do it by video conference, and that to ensure that there are no other people in the room, maybe at the beginning of a closed session meeting, if they're attending by conference, that they would in fact announce that, and that would be part of the minutes, that they're in fact saying that there's no one with me, there's no one on the line, you know, that, that's, just so that it gives assurance that we're doing it. Because otherwise, you can start the meeting, and I can have someone sitting over here, and no one will know if there's a person over there, we just run the meeting, and they hear everything that went on in a closed session meeting. So I think at least you have some kind of level of assurance that that's what's going on, if you're, if someone climbs away while we're doing this. We haven't anticipated anybody doing it, that if we're putting together rules, it should be lasting into the future, who knows who's going to be on, and who knows what intentions someone might have later, what they want to hear, and what we should, I don't know. But that's why you want to build some type of, some type of assurance that it's, that the person participating by video conference, using that ability, is at least telling you that there's no one else in the room, this is a secure, a secure of communication as we can get with the technology we have, in a closed session, you're not inadvertently or purposely breaking that law. That's, you know, and I may have to do a little more, but that was my concern. These are the changes brought here, that's what I was concerned with, yeah.
Mr. Rose, or may Mr. Morgan vote?
Yeah.
To address the concern that council members, we have, I agree with the mayor, they need to, want council members to make sure that they're communicating from a secure location. Rule 37 specifically states all confidential information should be kept confidential, all closed meetings should remain closed, as provided in codes of council members acting. Pursuant to that rule 37, ensuring that the meeting should remain closed, which means that that information cannot be available to outsiders. As far as the mechanics of how to do that, I suppose it would depend on the location. One of the benefits of changing the rule to allow video conference in closed sessions is that you can vote under the sunshine law, you can't vote by telephone. So right now, a council member may participate by telephone, but not by video. So if you needed, or if you wanted to allow that council member to vote, you would need to have video conference capability in order to have that vote under the sunshine law. You know, certain votes, in fact, all votes in closed session must be by oral talk vote. So, that is, that is a reply. One other thing I would raise, clarification of rule 37, you see the red line version that, in that first paragraph, states all closed meeting records, and votes should remain closed, as provided in code chapter 150. That is repeated in the second paragraph, so that's just, that sentence in the first paragraph is, is surplus, and it may be stricken in entirety of rule 37, that would be in that second paragraph, just as a clarification. Does that address?
It does, but I, it does, but I, that's what I was getting at, is it needs to, those to be, because we've all reacted on that. But I just wanted to make sure, did we need any other sort of process to outline? That's all, that was my question. And I guess we just have to rely on council members' integrity and hope for the best.
Well, and you can also, during the meeting, council may inquire of the council member participating by video conferences to the situation, the IT situation there, to make sure that the council's satisfied that this is actually a secure connection, and then allow that council member to continue participating. So it's, council has that discretion.
Yeah, I actually appreciate the fact, also, to replace it, there's quite a lot of folks who have done some force to apply, and that's if it's a protocol. Hopefully that, if there is one, maybe we can determine if there's something else we need to do, to come back and give a little bit of more meat, if you will, to this rule. Any other questions or items of discussion regarding the council rules? Hearing that, we have a motion that may be approved. Motion by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all who favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We will now move to our next section of citizen participation. Beginning when you are asked to come forward, please give your name and address, we're limited to five minutes. Our next request to speak is Ms. Songe Pointer.
Hello. I just want to say that I am against the Tiff Olive 170 project. I'll talk more about that. Excuse me, your name and address, please. Songe Pointer, 839 Canton. I'm against the Olive 172 project for various reasons, gentrification being one, displacing or displacing small businesses being another, and I'll get back to, I'll comment about the rest later. But I do want to acknowledge Human Rights Day. Thank you for mentioning that. And I actually just went on the United Nations website, and one thing that they talk about in relation to human rights is sustainable development goals for achieving those human rights. They said that human rights are driven by progress on all sustainable development goals. One of the goals is make cities inclusive, safe, resilient, and sustainable. It says that cities should provide opportunities for all with access to basic services, energy, housing, transportation, and more. So if we're going to acknowledge Human Rights Day as a city, we should at least also acknowledge the complementary Sustainable Development Goals, especially as it relates to development in the City of University City. That's something that you all should have taken into consideration when you started this project. So we go back to that. I also want to talk about, and I talked about this before, the Environmental Protection Agency, and their views on equitable development and environmental justice. Environmental justice relates to low-income and minority populations, and in this case, in the Third Ward. It's the same thing that you all told Metropolitan Sewer District when they were trying to put Rossa Beach tanks in our neighborhood. We are still an environmental justice community, don't forget that. And it says, "In terms of equitable development, equitable development is driven by priorities and values, as well as clear expectations, that the outcomes from development need to be responsive to underserved populations and vulnerable groups, in addition to using innovative design strategies and sustainable policies. Acknowledging and understanding both is necessary for sustaining environmental justice." When has the city done that? Have you all come to us in the Third Ward to ask us what we like? And how have you incorporated it into the planning process, into the development process? I don't think that that has been achieved as part of this project, and I've asked over and over again, and I haven't heard any response as to how that has been achieved. So again, stop this project, come to us, do your due diligence as a city, to make sure that everyone in this community, whether it's the Third Ward or the First or Second, as well as our businesses, are included in this process before you move forward with this. Thank you.
Our next request to speak is Tom James. Our next request to speak is Tom Jennings.
Yeah, my name is Tom Jennings, 7055 Forsyth. Wasn't going to speak on this, but some other people did, and I thought I better bring it up, nice time. Last Friday was the leaf pickup for Forsyth on the South Sidestreet, and city came around, they posted between 1:00 and 3:00. They had it all set up, I guess they were gonna do it. They did get our Sidestreet, which does not have a parking, they got it all cleaned up, but I guess they didn't have time to get to it. But it was posted, posted as a tow zone. I noticed that most of the vehicles there, we had New York, Connecticut, Texas, all these cars down there, they didn't move. And I know the city did not get to it until Saturday, but it was posted, nobody moved, and the city, you know, of course, as far as I know, nothing was towed. And I think this is something I'd kind of like to have an opinion from the council, you know, from Mr. Rose, the last tow weather, why are we bothering to post it? Why even spend the money to send somebody down the street if it's gonna be like each other? You know, and we know very well that those are university students with those vehicles. And, you know, it's free parking, and I get it, but my question is, if I buy, I will say this much, you will like, Mr. Smotherson's bill last year, that for the handicap parking where he posted it specifically for that person, that was, nobody was there, that did get picked up on Saturday when they did it, and I know the person very well that lives there, and they really do need that spot, and I think that was a great idea, the way that was handled, really good. But it'd be my interest for me to hear from the council, city managers, as to why we're bothering, if we're not gonna do a thing about it. Thank you.
My thank you. Our bottom request to speak is a welcome back for an old friend, our former mayor, SK Representative Joe Adams. Welcome back. I'm heading back to the chambers. Howdy. Joe Adams, 94 Wall Street, Rayleigh. What else are we supposed to say? I'm sorry, I was hoping to get here earlier tonight, but I had to speak to a class over the horseshoe, Washington University, so I spoke to them about elections and everything else. But I wanted to give you something from me, from Jefferson City, and what I've got is actually, not for here in the council chambers, because those are the ceremony flags, but flags for our, some of our flagos in the city of University City. And so I have a new U.S. flagpole, and I got a flag that I don't see anyplace else except here, the State Fly. I brought it back, and I love this city, and I want you to keep it moving forward. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. And I see that the new mayor has relaxed the dress rules and everything. I do, I'm having a super holiday, having a holiday, and everything else. Today's the last day of holiday, so hopefully everybody have a good holiday. Good luck. Thank you, Joe. Again, thanks for your service to our community, both as mayor, council member, and SK Representative. Thank you. That concludes our citizen comments portion of the agenda. It's council comments. Ms. Carr?
Thank you. While I don't make a practice of answering people normally, I would like to answer Mr. Jennings. We are considering all of those issues with regard to parking. And I would expect that within the next 60 to 90 days, we will, we will have some bills before the council to take a look at this. We understand that it is a difficult situation, mostly for people that live nearby Washington University, but it's also a very difficult situation for those in the Eastern Section of Ward 2. And I can't speak, I can't speak for everyone, but it's the process of reevaluating what we have done and what we're in the process of doing is an ongoing one. The passage of an ordinance isn't the end of the situation. We always have to look at the reality of daily living here in the city and decide whether there need to be some tweaks or some improvements. And so to all of those that are, in fact, contacting me constantly about that, we are going to be taking a look at it, and in a very short amount of time.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. As the holiday season is upon us, we know many are gathering with friends and family, but for some, they may find themselves unable to connect with those as they wish to. For some who delight in conversation regarding the fact that 250 square feet of retail space necessitate one parking spot, they may find this conversation unwelcome to others. For those who wish to discuss speed deterrent systems in neighborhoods, may find themselves dining alone. For those who wish to discuss various traffic ordinances, they may find themselves without company. But I have, for those who are interested in that topic, a community for you, yes, the Traffic Commission. Now, some of you may be saying, Stacy, why dangle this succulent carrot of the Traffic Commission? Surely there are no vacancies, and if there are, there must be a waiting list that is in its mountain. But I say to you, you would be mistaken. There is a vacancy on the Traffic Commission, and I am in charge of filling it. So those who have this interest, those who seek that community, of those like-minded traffic aficionados, know that there is space for you. Now, many may be, are live streaming, certainly dashing to their phones, perhaps even moving towards their vehicles. Do not call this evening, no one shall answer. Do not come down here, you will find locked doors. But tomorrow, you may contact our Ms. Reese, our city clerk, if you seek application, or you may contact me, and I would be happy to receive your application and nominate you for the Traffic Commission. So friends, you need not be alone anymore. It is a peace for you.
You know, I think that's probably the best request we've ever had. I'm going to try to Mr. Smotherson's next.
Wow, I can't follow that. But simply what I wanted to say, I wanted to just mention three things, and one of the things that I wanted to mention is, I want to thank the patience and work that Ms. Penford has done. And I want to thank her also for having council member Stacy Clay, council member Hales, and myself, and welcoming us into their church service Sunday. And we congratulated and recognized the pastor for the street naming of, it's now the Reverend Joe Louis Middleton Straddle. So I wanted to thank Ms. Penford for that. I wanted to thank council member Clay and council member Hales for attending along with me. But I also wanted to thank our staff in this council for accommodating us and getting that done. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. One other thing before I state my last statement is this, I was having alumni get-together last night, and this is really interesting, and for me, I'm new at this development thing that's happening in University City, but something interesting happened last night, and that is, one of my alumni colleagues mentioned that she worked for a prominent company here in St. Louis, and that she just retired six months ago, but part of her job was developments in the St. Louis County area, and they were looking at us, and they were watching us. And I thought that was very interesting. I was sort of happy, again, I'm not even, I'm new to this, so I was happy to hear that. So I just wanted to let the council and the city know that people are watching, because one of the things that their company does is, if that development, depending how successful it is, they build into, they want an act to build into or near that development site. So I thought that was very interesting and encouraging. So I just hope that our city manager and city attorney are handling things well, and let's move forward. The last thing I would say, because this is the last council meeting of the year, is happy holidays to this council, city manager, to our mayor, and everyone here in attendance. Thank you.
Mr. Crusick?
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. I agree with council member Smotherson, how do we follow, how do we follow, act like that? Couple things I'd like to say quickly. Last week, I was emailed by a resident that there was a deconstruction site that did not have a fence around it, and we immediately forwarded those emails to Mr. Rose, and he has state staffers working on it. And the people that were destroying the house, tearing it down, were cited, and a fence was removed today. So I want to thank the residents that alerted something like that to us, because it is the residents that are the eyes and the ears for us to let us know when there are issues and problems out there like that, and to, for all of you to continue to be vigilant and let us know when there are issues that need to be addressed. Because once we knew about it, Mr. Rose had the city staff people write on it. And I'd like to thank those people that came up and spoke about parking, parking enforcement. And as everyone may remember, we had a work session, study session on November 13th to speak about Washington University, and at that time, Mayor Crowe suggested that we form a subcommittee to look at our zoning ordinances and enforcement, and in fact, he has asked some of us to sit on that subcommittee. So what I would like to say to residents is, if you have further ideas or concerns, please forward those to us, so that we can consider those when we're looking at the zoning, car parking, zoning, and ordinances like that. And especially with ideas, good ideas, like tow zones in areas that do not have them, so that we can have the necessary tools in place, so that we can back up our ordinances and our zoning code. And with that, I'll say to everyone, have a happy and safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be rehearsing the, as many of you know, that in the next year, we will begin the taking of the United States Census, and each of the communities in Missouri have been asked to put together a Complete Account Commission within their cities. So we are establishing the University City Complete Account Commission, and I was very humbled and pleased that both mayors, Joe Adams and Shelley Wells, have agreed to be the honorary co-chairs of that commission, and we will be working with individuals to help increase participation for University City. I think as most of you know, the opportunity will be for us to engage in local outreach efforts, both with community organizations, faith-based groups, local businesses, and the media. And in particular, this group will be charged with trying to get better participation from those that are in the hard-to-count demographics, in particular veterans, people with disabilities, homeless winters, college students, immigrants, seniors, those that are language-constrained, and people that are living in poverty. We hope that we'll be able to get a number of people in our community involved in this process, because the more folks we show in our census, the better our community is. And so to all of you, I also wish you a happy holiday, and as a procedural notice to all of you, there was a notice given for an executive session starting at 5:45. We worked through that executive session and took a recess to come up to open session, and now the council will move back into closed session at the conclusion of this meeting. Thank you. The public session is adjourned, and closed session will continue.